As we gather this morning, I would like to acknowledge on behalf of council and our community that we are meeting on traditional territory of the First Nations. We would like to thank the Ogonkun people and express our respect and support for their rich history. We're extremely grateful for their many and continued displays of friendship. We also thank all the generations of people who've taken care of this land for thousands of years. And if you could please stand for a moment of silent reflection.
Mr. Kelly, could you conduct a roll call, please?
Yes, sir, and good morning. Councillor Bennett?
Present.
Councillor Bros?
Present.
Councillor Doncaster?
Here.
Councillor Donahue?
Here.
Warden Nemo?
Present.
Councillor Chardini?
Present.
Councillor Grills?
Here.
Councillor Yon?
Here.
Councillor Lynch?
Here.
Councillor McKenzie?
Present.
Councillor Mayville?
Present.
Councillor Murphy?
Here.
Councillor Nicholson?
Here.
Councillor Service?
Here.
Councillor Watt?
Present.
Councillor Weir?
Here.
And Councillor Wilmer?
Present.
Warden, you have quorum.
Thank you, it's a pleasure to see everybody today. Are there any disclosures of community interest and the general nature thereof? Seeing none, thank you. And with that, if we could have a motion to adopt the minutes of February 22 and 23, which was the budget workshop, and March 29, 2023. A mover, please? Member from township of Horton and the member from the town of Laurentian Hills. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, none, it's carried, thank you very much. To members of county council, I'd like to inform you that during the month of April, I attended 17 meetings on county business. On April 3, I met with the Chair of the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus to discuss shared initiatives and priorities, including the common advocacy topics for upcoming meetings with our members of federal and provincial parliament. On April 5, I presented the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus 7 in 7 Housing Initiative to the council of the County of Leeds and Grenville, and on April 7, I made the same presentation to the County of Frontenac Council. On April 6, I attended the annual general meeting of the Eastern Ontario Regional Network via Zoom. On April 14, I attended a Roma Board of Directors meeting, discussion was held on the 2023 Budget Review, LAS Cyber Insurance Program, and the updates on broadband housing drainage action, and justice of the peace vacancies, and you'll see more in from councillor Murphy. On April 14, I also participated in the Ottawa Valley Tourist Association Tourism Awards Judging Panel. These awards were presented at the OBTA Annual General Meeting and Conference yesterday at Maple Haas in Hardwood Lake in the township of Broodinell, Lindock, and Raglan. On April 14, I attended an electronic meeting with the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus and their MPs and MPPs from Southwestern Ontario about Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus priorities. April 15, I attended Hospice Rentford 15 year anniversary, which was held at St. Joe's High School in Rentford. On April 17, I attended a Roma Board meeting via Zoom. It was with the FCM Legal Council to discuss an issue that impacts all of rural Ontario. On April 19, I attended an SPN Research Affordable Housing Seminar Planning Session webinar. And on April 28, I met along with CAO Kelly, Craig Kelly, with Garrison Commander, Petawawa Commander Colonel Guiney. It was an important opportunity to meet him and discuss mutual interests. We have invited the Colonel to the May County Council meeting. I will remind those assembled here of the following: the County of Rentford, experience our history and share our future. So this concludes my address for this session of county council. I'd also like to apologize to councillor Nicholson, I omitted that he covered off for me in March. He went to the agriculture dinner for the Wall of Honour. At the last minute, I had to change my schedule, and I'll share this story. Neil was very quick to say, yes, I'll do it, and then three seconds later texted me saying, I have a problem. And he committed a rookie mistake, he was looking at his own calendar and not knowing that I would intrude on it, and he'd sent all his clothes to the dry cleaners. So, he, we agreed that he could wear a jacket and a pair of jeans, so thank you Neil, and thank you for allowing me to share this. I know that the people there said, we'll never invite you again, we're always going to invite Neil, so thank you Neil. Also, if, are there any early departures today, people that need to leave early? I know councillor Doncaster, councillor Nicholson, I'm just checking for quorum and chairs. Okay, thank you very much. And at this point, we'll move to delegations, and I believe Chief Nolan, you are taking the lead on this. It's a real pleasure to see our friends in the audience, and I'm going to enjoy honoring them.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and to members of council, it's my privilege to be here today to recognize two individuals who've made an incredible contribution to the County of Rentford, both throughout the pandemic and in the creation of the VTAC program. Dr. Cushman, as our acting associate, acting medical officer of health previously with Rentford County District Health Unit, and Lee Levesque, Lee's here as well as the CAO, CEO, I never get it right, one's one and one's the other, of the RMPR Regional Health, our partners in RMPR, who, as you know, at the beginning of the pandemic were instrumental in working with us in the creation of the VTAC program, and have been incredible partners in terms of providing guidance, in terms of health system, health policy, and advocating for the programs, while continuing to amplify the voice of all hospitals within the county. And Lee has been a conduit for hospitals, both at our advisory committee and steering committee, but on a day-to-day basis, remembering that the VTAC program has a significant role to play in supporting our hospital partners, but also has the ability to affect the landscape both in primary care and in acute care. And we know that that can happen to the positive, but it's also possible that can happen to the negative. So Lee's been very good to keep us on track and make sure that the services we're providing are sensitive to the needs not only of the residents, but also of our partners in the hospital sector, so thank you for that, Lee. I'd like to invite Dr. Cushman and Lee to come forward, because on behalf of council, we have created chief's commendations for their efforts, and there'll also be an opportunity for both Ms. Levesque and Dr. Cushman to speak, and to share their experiences and any comments that they have. So, Rob, Lee, if you don't mind coming forward, I'd appreciate it. So the chief's commendation is really an award that we created a little over 10 years ago, for exemplary service, for going above and beyond and being a leader in our community. It's been awarded to members of the public, to paramedics, to our administrative staff, and as well individuals such as Ms. Levesque and Dr. Cushman for extraordinary effort, and not only the work effort that they put in, but truly their passion for our community, and their commitment to partnership and collaboration across the health sector. So first, Lee, thank you very much for everything that you've done.
Thank you.
Okay. And I'll do Dr. Cushman's as well.
Thank you.
So, many of you are familiar with Dr. Cushman, so I'd like to ask Lee to speak first, just so we leave a little bit of oxygen in the room, and allow Dr. Cushman to share his comments. As you know, Dr. Cushman's recently retired, so I think he's got more to say than just VTAC and the pandemic. And subsequent to that, we'll do a picture with the group, for Tina's sake, and then Chair Donahue would also like to introduce a special guest that we have with us here today. So with that, Ms. Levesque?
Thank you very much, there's an expression, if you're not first, you're last, so thank you for letting me get ahead of Dr. Cushman. It's an extreme pleasure to be here today. COVID, as you all know, has been an extremely challenging time in healthcare, and one of the greatest rewards is actually being able to partner with Rentford County for VTAC. The impact on the communities across Rentford County are huge, many of you know, lots of patients are not able to access primary care, but I think for the future, this is the most positive thing I've seen in healthcare in a long, long time. So, out of a crisis sometimes comes innovation, and great work to Chief Nolan for the work he's done for many, many years, lots of innovation that he has been the leader of, but more so for Rentford County for VTAC. So, thank you very much, really privileged to take this back and share it with the team back at the hospital, and I'll pass it over to Dr. Cushman, but thank you.
Well, I guess I got my marching orders, I intended to be brief. First of all, it's great to be here, it's like old home week, and certainly, I don't know, Peter and Michael, I think when I came on, I was supposed to do four months, and I don't know whether it was five or six years minus.
I remember pitching that to you, yes.
Yeah, 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 that's right, that's right. So, anyway, it's great to be here, and to see Jennifer is also on the health committee, so, our board, so, I think what, and of course, when Mike asks you to help out, it's never-ending, but it's always exciting, and it always makes a contribution, I mean, this man has such vision. And to Arne Pryor and Lee, I mean, they were, and Karen, who's actually not here today, they're not only the hospital, but their family health team did really yeoman service, not only with VTAC, but also with COVID. For me, I really was very proud of Rentford County during COVID. I mean, you look at our immunization rates, you even look at our current immunization rates, there's a lot to be proud of, so I thank everybody for that, and even my detractors, because they were respectful. And we've seen there's been a real lack of respect in other domains, and also within COVID, you think of Dr. Fauci, I think of my colleague Vera Etches in Ottawa, so I really, hats off, salute to Rentford County. As far as this goes, VTAC, I can't really, you all know, it's terrific, but what you see here is an example of real, of coming together, sharing the future, how to be really strong in the field of health, healthcare, and health in general, that everyone has to come together to break down the silos and to work together. And I don't think, when I really think back to the city of Ottawa, you know, it's better to be small, it's better to be agile, it's better to be flexible, and it's better to know people as part of your extended family, and that's how you can grow strong. So I really think that Rentford County has a bright future with things like VTAC and with other organizations like the Ontario Health Teams. So congratulations, but keep your eye on the ball and keep working, and by doing so, you'll improve the health and the quality of life of those in Rentford County. Thank you.
That was a lot faster than I expected, Rob, so thank you, that's good. And you're not going skiing today, so I don't know what the hurry was, but thank you. With that, could I invite the CAO, the Warden, and the Chair Health to join us for a picture up front, quickly? Thank you very much. Just before I get into my introduction, I certainly want to acknowledge Rob and his time at the Health Unit. If in fact, he was the acting medical officer of health, it was an Oscar-worthy performance over the entirety of that four months, and it seems that we just kept replacing the calendar pages, so Rob was uncertain what the time of year was. It was, this in fact, is Rob's re-retirement that he is embarking on now, so once again, Rob, thank you so much. It brings me great pleasure today to introduce the new medical officer of health for Rentford County and District, Dr. Jason Morganstern is with us this morning. I have to acknowledge that I was appointed to by Chair Warden EMO in 2015 to the Health Unit, and was only there a very brief time when Dr. Maureen Carew, the last non-acting medical officer of health, was there and departed shortly after, and in fact, just ended at the end of 2022, my time on the board for public health, and we have a new medical officer of health, so I can't help but think that perhaps it was me. Anyway, it brings me great pleasure, once again, to have our full-time and permanent medical officer of health, once again installed at the Health Unit, Dr. Jason Morganstern.
Thanks so much for the introduction, and thank you, everyone, for the chance to come here and say hello, I really appreciate it. So, I'm thrilled to be here. Just a little bit about my background, prior to this, I was an associate medical officer of health for the Halton Region Health Department, and, you know, earlier in my career, I've spent time in a few different public health units across Southern Ontario, but I'm really excited to be coming back here, because I spent my childhood growing up in Rentford County and Lannar County, so this feels like coming back home to me and being closer to family, and I'm really excited about that opportunity. Right now, my focus is listening and learning, getting to know the community, getting to know our programming and our partners better, and this is an important part of that. And, you know, as I'm getting to know everything better, I'm really optimistic about the future, I know that they've been doing amazing work at the Rentford County and District Health Unit so far, and continuing to collaborate and work together to support optimal health for the Rentford County and District residents, so thanks for having me.
Thank you, I'd like to add a few words to Leah and to Rob. We're very fortunate, Rentford County and a lot of smaller communities, in the past, there's always been very good cooperation and sharing of duties at the front lines, and that permeated, has permeated up to the management and executive levels, and it's been personified by these two individuals, the ability to recognize the job had to get done, and the limitations of our community, we're sparsely populated, ribbons of population, and we're spread out, and that causes difficulties for every one of us that are serving the community. And so, Rob and Leah very quickly recognized that, and leadership comes in many fashions, it comes individually within your organization, where you lead your organization, but you have to lead in the community, and sometimes, leading in the community means becoming part of a team, and contributing what you can, and changing the focus and the direction of your own internal resources, and then also going out and begging, borrowing, and stealing resources from others to make it work for the greater good. And so, I've always been extremely impressed with VTAC as a concept, but VTAC as a community service model, which is being serviced by the community. And so, for the dedication of their resources and their time to work with Chief Nolan and the County of Rentford, and the problems of Ontario frankly, to develop this model that's not traditional bricks and mortar, and it's not a traditional service model, and it's not a lot of things that people have seen before, and to strike out on very spongy ground with hope and a prayer and a vision that evolved, takes a lot of guts, and a lot of vision, and a commitment, and so thank you very much for that. You know, this is quite groundbreaking, and I'm not sure people can recognize how significant it is for rural Ontario, but more specifically for us to develop something that's innovative and brand-new, where a number of services came together very quickly, trusted each other, and devoted resources and time and money to make it work. So thank you to both of you, you know, we really appreciate that, and we need to stress how important you were to developing this model of treatment. And this model of treatment's gonna last, it's not something that's gonna go away in 18 months, it's gonna be around for 20 years at least, while we evolve it, and thank you for that, and we want you to take back the message, we continue to value you as an organization, but also value your input, your research, and your time and resources towards this. So thank you very much for your help in saving our community. I'd like to add to, Rob, thank you very much for your service with the Health Unit, I've been on the board the whole time, and you, you know, we've had many conversations about, we had to shift job descriptions around to reflect things, we had to change and work on relationships internally and externally, and you've always been visionary and flexible, and I know I've leaned on you a number of times to ask questions about when I've, my role at EMO and Roma, about the many phases of transforming public health, that's never quite come to fruition thankfully, so if we can just allow the problems to keep talking about it, not do anything, I think we'll be fine. And so, I've depended upon you for that, so thank you very much for that, and I hope you have a glorious and happy retirement, though I fully expect that you've got something in mind for the future, and we'll see you again, but thank you very much for all your time and effort with us, we've certainly benefited from your four-month secondment to us, and we may bring you back at some point.
Hello, you're the new man.
Yes, well, we're very, and to-
And also within COVID, you think of Dr. Fauci, I think of my colleague Vera Etches in Ottawa. So I really, hats off, salute to Renfrew County. As far as this goes, VTAC, I can't really, you all know, it's terrific. But what you see here is an example of real, of coming together, sharing the future. How to be really strong in the field of health, healthcare and health in general, that everyone has to come together to break down the silos and to work together. And I don't think, when I really think back to the city of Ottawa, you know, it's better to be small, it's better to be agile, it's better to be flexible, and it's better to know people as part of your extended family. And that's how you can grow strong. So I really think that Renfrew County has a bright future with things like VTAC and with other organizations like the Ontario Health Teams. So congratulations, but keep your eye on the ball and keep working. And by doing so, you'll improve the health and the quality of life of those in Renfrew County. Thank you.
That was a lot faster than I expected, Rob, so thank you. That's good. And you're not going skiing today, so I don't know what the hurry was, but thank you. With that, could I invite the CIO, the Warden and the Chair Health to join us for a picture up front quickly?
Thank you very much. Just before I get into my introduction, I certainly want to acknowledge Rob and his time at the Health Unit. If in fact, he was the Acting Medical Officer of Health, it was an Oscar-worthy performance over the entirety of that four months. And it seems that we just kept replacing the calendar pages, so Rob was uncertain what the time of year was. It was, this in fact, is Rob's re-retirement that he is embarking on now. So once again, Rob, thank you so much. It brings me great pleasure today to introduce the new Medical Officer of Health for Renfrew County and District. Dr. Jason Morgenstern is with us this morning. I have to acknowledge that I was appointed to by Chair Warden Emo in 2015 to the Health Unit and was only there a very brief time when Dr. Maureen Carew, the last non-acting Medical Officer of Health, was there and departed shortly after. And in fact, just ended at the end of 2022, my time on the board for public health. And we have a new Medical Officer of Health, so I can't help but think that perhaps it was me. Anyway, it brings me great pleasure, once again, to have our full-time and permanent Medical Officer of Health, once again installed at the Health Unit, Dr. Jason Morgenstern.
Thanks so much for the introduction. And thank you, everyone, for the chance to come here and say hello. I really appreciate it. So I'm thrilled to be here. Just a little bit about my background. Prior to this, I was an Associate Medical Officer of Health for the Halton Region Health Department. And, you know, earlier in my career, I've spent time in a few different public health units across southern Ontario. But I'm really excited to be coming back here because I spent my childhood growing up in Renfrew County and Lannar County. So this feels like coming back home to me and being closer to family. And I'm really excited about that opportunity. Right now, my focus is listening and learning, getting to know the community, getting to know our programming and our partners better. And this is an important part of that. And, you know, as I'm getting to know everything better, I'm really optimistic about the future. I know that they've been doing amazing work at the Renfrew County and District Health Unit so far and continuing to collaborate and work together to support optimal health for the Renfrew County and District residents. So thanks for having me.
Thank you. I'd like to add a few words to Leah and to Rob. We're very fortunate. Renfrew County and a lot of smaller communities, in the past, there's always been very good cooperation and sharing of duties at the front lines. And that permeated, has permeated up to the management and executive levels. And it's been personified by these two individuals. The ability to recognize the job had to get done and the limitations of our community. We're sparsely populated, ribbons of population, and we're spread out. And that causes difficulties for every one of us that are serving the community. And so Rob and Leah very quickly recognized that. And leadership comes in many fashions. It comes individually within your organization, where you lead your organization, but you have to lead in the community. And sometimes, leading in the community means becoming part of a team and contributing what you can and changing the focus and the direction of your own internal resources. And then also going out and begging, borrowing and stealing resources from others to make it work for the greater good. And so I've always been extremely impressed with VTAC as a concept, but VTAC as a community service model, which is being serviced by the community. And so for the dedication of their resources and their time to work with Chief Nolan and the County of Renfrew and the problems of Ontario, frankly, to develop this model that's not traditional bricks and mortar, and it's not a traditional service model, and it's not a lot of things that people have seen before. And to strike out on very spongy ground with a hope and a prayer and a vision that evolved, takes a lot of guts and a lot of vision and a commitment. And so thank you very much for that. You know, this is quite groundbreaking. And I'm not sure people can recognize how significant it is for rural Ontario, but more specifically for us to develop something that's innovative and brand-new, where a number of services came together very quickly, trusted each other and devoted resources and time and money to make it work. So thank you to both of you. You know, we really appreciate that, and we need to stress how important you were to developing this model of treatment. And this model of treatment is going to last. It's not something that's going to go away in 18 months. It's going to be around for 20 years at least while we evolve it. And thank you for that. And we want you to take back the message. We continue to value you as an organization, but also value your input, your research and your time and resources towards this. So thank you very much for your help in saving our community. I'd like to add to, Rob, thank you very much for your service with the Health Unit. I've been on the board the whole time. And you, you know, we've had many conversations about, we had to shift job descriptions around to reflect things. We, you know, had to change and work on relationships internally and externally. And you've always been visionary and flexible. And I know I've leaned on you a number of times to ask questions about when I've, my role at Emo and Roma, about the many phases of transforming public health that's never quite come to fruition, thankfully. So if we can just allow the problems to keep talking about it and not do anything, I think we'll be fine. And so I've depended upon you for that. So thank you very much for that. And I hope you have a glorious and happy retirement, though I fully expect that you've got something in mind for the future and we'll see you again. But thank you very much for all your time and effort with us. We've certainly benefited from your four-month secondment to us. And we may bring you back at some point. Yes. Well, we're very, and to Dr. Morgenstern, thank you very much. We're very, very happy to see you. Googled you and then spent some time chasing your resume through the various municipal sectors just to check on you, my unofficial duties. And you've come very highly recommended. So with that, we have great expectations, and I'm sure you'll deliver as we've looked at your career. So thank you for being with us. And now we move to Mr. O'Shaughnessy. And who is introducing Mr. O'Shaughnessy today? The councillor from the town of Arnpriar. Could you introduce Mr. O'Shaughnessy, please? No, no, Dan, I sent you an email just about three minutes ago.
There it is. Good morning. It's my pleasure to introduce Darrell O'Shaughnessy. He's the mainstay of Arnpriar McNab Brayside. If you're an old-timer like we are and you think you're a carpenter, then you should go to the Men's Shed. It's located in McNab Brayside. It's a place where older fellows can go and woodwork, carve, do their trade. Then that product then is donated or sold to the communities. And it's a fundraising, so when you go to Arnpriar, you'll see benches. You'll see the Grove Nursing Home. There's all kinds of wooden statues and whatnot in there. The leader of this is Darrell O'Shaughnessy. He'll give you the history of the Men's Shed across Canada, to which we are number 21. Wow. So two and one, it was close. Anyways, Darrell O'Shaughnessy is the mainstay of Arnpriar McNab Brayside Men's Shed. Darrell? Well, first of all, I just wanted to show you, these aprons are compliments of Lee Valley Tools and the Lions Club. So we're very proud to wear these. So anyway, Mr. Warden, thank you, members of council, ladies and gentlemen. Again, my name is Darrell O'Shaughnessy, and I am very, very, very proud and honored to be here. But first, I want you to know that I am a professional. And what I mean by that is that I am a professional senior man. And I have the knowledge and experience and the battle scars to qualify. So when I say to you that senior men know what they want, please believe me. Senior men want to share their life knowledge and experience that has made them wiser, more thoughtful, and yes, ladies and gentlemen, even more realistic. And I should say that we want to be treated with respect and dignity, which is really not too much to ask for, is it? I also want you to know that we have the capacity to effectively deliver, given the opportunity to be creative, charitable, and being part of something special and meaningful. So just imagine helping to create a community-based Men's Shed movement like this that actually works, particularly for senior men and those who are unemployed even. I don't know, somebody flipping the slides for me? Oh, I can't see it, so. Okay, oh, they're all around me, okay. I know I'm not. So anyway, ladies and gentlemen, I want to take this opportunity to examine and present to you the Arnpriar and McNab Brayside Men's Shed and how it fits into our community as a social healthcare innovation. James, please, like, okay, here we go. The next one should be setting the stage, the next slide. Okay. Anyway, setting the, okay. Men's Shed worldwide helps senior men in particular lead active and healthy lives and stay connected with their communities. And most importantly, we find companionship and we have fun, and we do it all together. And after almost 20 years of experience, the Men's Shed movement, both around the world, if you will, is considered a social healthcare innovation and helps form part of an age-friendly community. I say this because it fully supports healthy aging and aging in place. It's a community-building experience. Next slide, please. The Men's Shed recognizes that senior men have a wide range of skills and abilities, and we actually celebrate that fact. It integrates seniors into the life of the community it serves. It gives senior men a chance to simply give back and share their life experiences and knowledge. It also fosters better relationships, both personal and at home, and helps grow respect for others as well. And most importantly, the Men's Sheds help combat social isolation, depression, and fully support and enhance personal wellbeing and good health. I say this to you, ladies and gentlemen, because it has been a life-changing experience for me personally. Next slide, please. Ladies and gentlemen, there is a particular need to tackle isolation in senior men. Research has shown that men are less likely to have strong social networks and less likely to feel comfortable sharing their feelings with their family members and face a higher risk of mortality related to social isolation than women. And as I maintain, the Men's Shed movement, both in Canada and abroad, is without a doubt a social healthcare innovation. It's all about working together to help create a healthy community, an age-friendly community. So just what is a Men's Shed? In addition to Canada, we have Men's Sheds in New Zealand, Australia, the United Kingdom, Kenya, Iceland, the Netherlands, and the concept is growing. Currently, in Ontario, we have 12 Men's Sheds. In Canada, we now have 51 as of yesterday. Most senior men are looking for a place to hang out, to tinker, connect with others, find a listening ear, tell stories. Some of them may be true. Socialize and be accepted for who they really are without any judgment whatsoever. Men's Sheds satisfy these needs. Our Men's Shed, the Arnpriar and McNab Brayside Men's Shed, is a modern, shared version of a home workshop. We bring together retired tradesmen, teachers, labors, engineers, farmers, businessmen, along with persons with disabilities, even persons in the early stages of dementia. And we have a common purpose. We simply give back more than we receive. Our vision is to create a space where men can enjoy meeting, making friends, socializing, and helping each other overcome or deal with any feelings of loneliness, isolation, and/or depression. And as I said previously, we help create an opportunity for our senior men to meet new friends and neighbors, develop companionships and receive the attention they so well-deserved, and stay healthy and connected as well. Ladies and gentlemen, at our Men's Shed, we build bird and bat houses. We build raised flower and planter boxes. Woodworking kits for youth, part of our intergenerational programming. Also, woodworking kits for the Dementia Society of Ottawa and Renfrew County. Wheelchair accessible picnic tables, one of our specialties. Memory boxes for long-term care facilities. Recreation equipment for our community partners, like game sets, little outdoor skating rinks, ring toss equipment. We build PPE, little wooden toys and trucks for children. Wood carvings. Little ending libraries for our community, another specialty. Minor home repairs for seniors. Once again, our common purpose is to give back more than we receive. And we have a common saying, which is echoed around the world. No matter how you feel, you get up, you dress up, you show up, and you never, ever give up. So how do we develop our Men's Shed program? There is no preordained structure or formula to maintain the Men's Shed model nationally or internationally. Each Men's Shed attempts to meet the needs of the local guys and their communities. Hence, you must do your homework. Figure out what is best for you and sustainable moving forward. Today, you are helping me set that stage. We are very, very fortunate to be associated with Arnpriar Regional Health and receiving funding for rent, materials, equipment, supplies and services from the town of Arnpriar, the townships of McNab Brayside, and grants from the Ontario Ministry of Seniors and Accessibility through Arnpriar Regional Health. Through this funding model, we have achieved great, great success. So community involvement is critical in helping our senior men lead active and healthy lives and to stay at home longer even. Let's talk a bit about the challenges that Men's Sheds face, not only here, but around the world. Obtaining affordable space. Rent. Utilities like heat and electricity are costly. How about liability insurance? Partnering with a healthcare alliance was essential in our case. Miscellaneous supplies. Our community partners have stepped up and helped us out. We receive community discounts for wood, materials and supplies. Transportation costs. Connecting with seniors at home programs in our area was key, also farming carpools. And last but not least, Men's Shed promotion, recruitment and sales. Yes, ladies and gentlemen, sales. Through our community networks, we have marketed ourselves with care and precision. Through healthcare organizations like Arnpriar Regional Health, service groups and organizations like our Seniors Active Living Centre, Rotary, Lions and Optimus Clubs, local and provincial governments, as well as the private business sector and the general population. As a result, we have helped form and part of a designated age-friendly community in the town of Arnpriar. Tips for success. Recognize your community leaders and work with them to identify community needs and effectively network within the community. Promote and sell the Men's Shed concept as a social healthcare innovation, one that helps our senior men remain productive, active, healthy and engaged. Effectively establish good and productive business relationships with local government, service groups and organizations, local community leaders, as well as the local population, of course. It's the key to success. Make your Men's Shed journey a real community engagement experience. As a result, you will identify funding sources, donations, space, resources, and most importantly, new partnerships and friendships that'll last a lifetime. I mean that. Wrap-up. Senior men offer expertise, skills, experience, mentorship, a great desire to give back and make a difference, and a real want, ladies and gentlemen, to continue contributing to society. Working shoulder to shoulder in a great environment, building and fixing little things for the community, swapping stories and, yes, telling little lies. And also boasting about friends and family makes men feel good about themselves and stay connected. Conclusion. The Men's Shed movement around the world is without a doubt considered a social healthcare innovation. It's all about working together to create a healthy and vibrant community, an age-friendly community, in fact. In this overhead, you'll see that our guys posed for last year's Christmas calendar. So you can see that we do have a heck of a lot of fun, whether we're, I don't know, clothed or naked, I guess. You don't know what's going on behind those aprons. But anyway, I would like to conclude, ladies and gentlemen, by stating that to you, it may only be a shed, if you will. But for guys and other guys, just like me, it's really a sanctuary. And before I leave, I have an ask for you to seriously consider, please. Will the county of Renfrew help me, as founder of the Arnpriar and McNab Brayside Men's Shed, and in association with Men's Shed Ontario, help us promote and establish new Men's Sheds throughout the county of Renfrew in order to help our senior men remain productive, active, healthy and engaged, and also to stay at home longer? So ladies and gentlemen, I thank you very much for this opportunity. It means a great deal to us, and I have a great deal of respect for this house. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation. And I want to assure you that part of our strategic plan is always the health of our community. And we recognize the social determinants of health as a guiding force. And this certainly meets most of the points in those decision matrices. And today was, you know, our first opportunity for us to present your model and Men's Sheds to members of County Council, who often lead and should lead their community in developing services for their community. So we wanted to ensure that everybody had a fulsome knowledge base going forward and they can take looks into their community. So thank you for your presentation. Are there any questions or comments? A member from Bonshire Valley, please, and then a member from Laurentian Hills.
Thank you, Warden. Thank you so much, Mr. O'Shaughnessy. That was very interesting. When you talk about sales, and this is purely a selfish question. I'm in the market for some planter boxes. Do you sell them?
Yes, do you have a pen? Yes, we do.
Excellent.
Yeah, we do sell them, yes.
So that's sort of one of your funding sources?
It is. And what we do really is we add a 25% markup over and above the cost of materials, and that helps to sustain us.
Excellent. Thank you for that.
Yes, thank you.
And Laurentian Valley, please. Laurentian Hills, I'm sorry. I do that at least.
You saw my stare.
One meeting, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Mr. O'Shaughnessy, thank you. It's right, I'm right here.
Oh, there you are.
Thank you for that presentation. I must admit, I was not aware of the Men's Shed program at all. I think it's very interesting and very needed in our community. I have two questions. Your bat houses, I know that CNL uses a lot of bat houses on their property, so. Your bat houses, I know that CNL uses a lot of bat houses on their property, so that may be a source of potentially a client there. And the other thing is, last year in Laurent-- well, it was in Deep River, but there was a health fair. Is that something that you're interested, and do you have the capability to go and have a table there to promote?
It would be our pleasure to do something like that.
Okay. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Thank you. And Mr. Kelly.
Strangely, I have a question. Mr. O'Shaughnessy, could you define seniors? Are there a lot of people that say 50 or 55 or 60? What's your age range of folks that help out at Men Shed?
It started out as 55 and over, but we now take men much younger because they need it. They're depressed, they're lonely, they're unemployed. We actually accept them, if not even a question. Mark?
I'm sorry, I was just writing a note. Councillor from McNab-Brayside.
So, thank you, Chair, and thank you, Daryl. You know that we really appreciate what you do in McNab-Brayside, and it's a pleasure to work with Armpryor on this project. And it's very exciting to hear your offer to extend the hope that you generate around the county. I think it'll be very well received. So on that note, just so that, we haven't talked about this, but on June 13th, the Operations Committee and Development and Property Committee is coming to McNab-Brayside. We can talk about this later and get in touch with staff, but if you can consider giving a tour to some of the county councillors when they're down there, I think that'd be appropriate, but we'll keep in touch about that.
That would be wonderful, Mark. That's wonderful. Happy to do that.
Councillor from Broodinell-Lindock-Raglan, and then Whitewater, please.
Thank you for your presentation. I think it's a really good service to have in the community. How many participants would you have in your Men Shed?
As of the other day, it's about 51, give or take.
Great.
We have, the crowd changes between winter and summer. People go to Florida. We still do that. And when golf season starts, you'll see a change in membership, but typically it's around 50. We are the fastest-growing Men Shed, by the way, in Canada. We started out with five.
Thank you. And Whitewater Region, please.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to echo, Armpryor, and specifically your name, Daryl, comes up every time you try to research becoming an age-friendly community in Ontario. And your Men Shed is one of the first things that popped up when Whitewater looked at trying to replicate some of the systems that are in existence. In addition to the Men Shed, your seniors at home, your Seniors Active Living Centre, the support that Armpryor and McNab-Brayside provide their seniors is a model, I think, that we need to replicate, not just in our centers where we have cities and greater populations, but out in our rural communities. And I would encourage and be very supportive of any efforts that the county would make to generate a Renfrew County age-friendly county plan, and any efforts we could do to support our rural townships in their efforts to do things like a Men Shed. So I thank you for your efforts, your advocacy. Keep it up, and you're doing more than you realize. So thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Bye-bye.
Thank you. So one of the things we'll do, Mr. O'Shaughnessy, is I will send an email to county council with your presentation and to their CAOs to start the conversation and suggest that you're ready to show up at various fairs and functions to spread the word. So again, to echo my friend from Whitewater, thank you very much. I don't think you recognize the impact you've had on our community and on our greater community. So thank you for your vision, your energy, and certainly your dedication to serving our community.
Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Mr. Kelly, any correspondence, please.
Warden, all the correspondence that we've received has been forwarded to the appropriate committee, and I believe one or two items will be addressed at the time of committee today. Thank you.
Thank you. And if council will indulge, we're going to have to move the schedule around for some not-so-apparent reasons, but with that, I would call on the Chair of Operations, please, to present operations, and then we'll move to health after operations. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Warden Eamon. Good to see you, Daryl. Just before I begin, the Operations Committee, I would like to take this opportunity to introduce Deep River Councillor Will Fitten, who is sitting in the audience here today. Councillor Fitten is second-term councillor in Deep River, and interestingly enough, garners more votes than any other person that runs for councillor in the town of Deep River.
Good morning and welcome.
And I can't help but think that his attendance here might be his opportunity to say that he may be my replacement someday. I don't know that, but, thank you, Warden Eamon. Members of county council, we, your Operations Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Item number one, the June Operations Committee meeting location, along with the Development Property Committee, we will be meeting in McNab-Brayside in June. Item number two, the monthly project status report that can be found on page 306. The capital program variance report can be found on page 308. Winter operations, and you'll see the chart of significant events and the participation amounts during the winter seasons can be found on Appendix 3 on page 310. Item number five, the fire dispatch system, and the information included there. Item number six, County Road 512, Foymount Road reconstruction update, and there will be an addendum later on in my report that will deal with this. Item number seven, resolutions. Moved by Chair, sorry, Resolution Number OPCC 230438, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, the county council send a letter of endorsement to Garrison-Pedawawa under the warden's signature for the construction of a roundabout on County Road 51, Pedawawa Boulevard, at the gate leading into Garrison-Pedawawa. And further, that a second letter be sent advising that the county of Renfrew will be responsible for at least, for, sorry, will be responsible for the asset once completed. However, it is not in a position to provide full funding contributions to this program. And the background is included there. Item number eight, the addition of County Road, four-story land road in the 2023 capital plan, Resolution Number OPCC 230440, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, that county council approve the removal of County Road 24, Whitewater Road, from Stafford Third Line to Highway 17, at a budget of $1,309,911 from the 2023 capital budget. And further, the County Road, four-story land road from County Road 653, Chanel Road, to Alex Lane be added to the 2023 capital budget in the amount of $1,309,911. The background is there, based on the deterioration of these two roads. Number nine, the addition of County Structure C168, Lake Clear Tri-Culvert, in the 2023 capital plan, Resolution Number OPCC 230441, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, the county council approve reducing the 2023 capital budget allocation for County Structure C325, Nelson Creek Culvert, from $450,000 to $31,000. And further, the County Structure C168, Lake Clear Tri-Culvert, be added to the 2023 capital budget in the amount of $419,000. And the background is available there, for further work to be done. Item number 10, County of Renfrew Sign Fee Structure Resolution OPCC 230442, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, the county council approve the fees associated with signage permits be altered from their existing values to $450 for a three-year permit. And the background is there. And I'll move on to bylaws. Item number 11, Renfrew County Weed Inspector, Resolution OPCC 230439, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, the county council pass a bylaw appointing Mr. Richard Bulldoc as weed inspector for the county of Renfrew, and further, the bylaw 66-14 is hereby rescinded. Item number 12, PWC 23-31, rehabilitation of County Structure 310, Ski Hill Bridge, Resolution OPCC 230443, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, that contract PWC-23, sorry, -2023-31, as submitted by Bonus Share Excavating, Inc., BEI, Renfrew, Ontario, for the rehabilitation of County Structure B310, Ski Hill Bridge, located on County Road 58, Round Lake Road, in the township of Laurentian Valley, in the amount of $847,082 plus HST be approved. And further, the county council pass a bylaw to authorize the execution of the contract. You can see the financial implications in the chart. Item number 13, Bridgeload Posting Bylaw, Resolution Number OPCC 230444, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, the county council pass a bylaw restricting the weight of vehicles passing over bridges in the county of Renfrew, and further, that bylaw 12-21 be repealed. And item number 14, Policy PW02 Bridges, Resolution Number OPCC 230445, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, the county council pass a bylaw approving the corporate policy PW02 Bridges, which outlines the criteria for new existing or replacement bridges to be considered for county of Renfrew structures. Item number 15, County Road 56, Wado Station Road Access Agreement, Resolution Number OPCC 230446, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, that a road access agreement to County Road 56, Wado Station Road, in the township of North Algonite, Wilberforce, between Tara Doschmann and Jacob Doschmann, and the county of Renfrew be approved. And further, that the county council pass a bylaw to authorize the execution of a road access agreement. This is based on a severance and setbacks from an intersection. Item number 16, Off-Road Vehicles on the County of Renfrew Roads, Resolution Number OPCC 230447, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, the county council pass a bylaw to amend bylaw number 7-21, bylaw, being a bylaw, to regulate the operation of off-road vehicles on county roads, to remove the restrictions of off-road vehicles from County Road 72, Ridge Road, and County Road 73, Deep River Road. And the background is there. Item number 17, PW-2023-03, Pavement Marking, Resolution Number OPCC 230448, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, that contract PWO-2023-03 for pavement markings, as submitted by Trillium Pavement Marking, Carlton Place, Ontario, in the amount of $650,117.40 plus HST be approved. And further, the county council pass a bylaw to authorize the execution of the contract. And you can see the results of the tender submissions. Does the warden want me to stop there or move on to the addendums?
If you could move on to the addendum, please.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Warden. Item number 18, I believe, bylaw, PWC-2023-28, C197, Edmansky Swamp Culvert, Resolution Number OPCC 230451, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, that PWC-2023-28, as submitted by Channelline International Fiberglass Manufacturing LLC, Dubai, for the manufacturer supply and delivery of a single glass reinforced plastic pipe liner for County Road Structure C197, Edmansky Swamp Culvert, located on County Road 62, John Street, township of McNab, sorry, township of Madawaska Valley, in the amount of $332,408 plus applicable taxes, be approved. And further, that county council pass a bylaw authorizing the execution of the contract. And the background is provided. And the costing of such. Item number 19, PWC-2023-44, Rehabilitation of County Road Structure, or County Structure B044 Douglas Bridge, Resolution OPCC 230451, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, that contract PWC-2023-44, as submitted by Bonus Share Excavating, Inc., BEI, Renfrew, Ontario, for the rehabilitation of County Structure B044 Douglas Bridge, located on County Road 5, Stone Road, township of Adamston-Bromley, in the amount of $741,223 plus HST be approved. And further, the county council pass a bylaw to authorize the execution of the contract. And you can see the results of the tenders and the budget implications. Item number 20, County Road 512, Foymount Road, Ontario 1, Class A Cost Estimate, Resolution Number OPCC 230453, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, that the proposed Class A estimate by Hydro One for the relocation of lines along the corridor of County Road 512, Foymount Road, between Buellow Road and Miller Road, township of Bonus Share Valley, in the amount of $423,740.13 plus applicable taxes be approved. And further, the county council pass a bylaw to authorize the execution of the works. This is just a continuation of the rehabilitation of Foymount Road and Ontario Hydro's estimate. Item number 21, PWC-2023-19, County Road 37, Murphy Road Rehabilitation, Resolution Number OPCC 230454, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, that contract PWC-2023-19, as submitted by H&amp;H Construction, Inc., Pedawawa, Ontario, for the rehabilitation of County Road 37, Murphy Road, from Portage Road to Woodland Crescent, a distance of 1.2 kilometers in the town of Pedawawa, in the amount of $710,91.74 plus HST be approved. And further, the county council pass a bylaw to authorize the execution of the contract. You can see the tender results and the financial implications there, all of which is respectfully submitted by myself, Chair, and members Bennett, Eemo Lynch, Mackenzie Watt and Wilmer.
And thank you. And before we dive into this and I ask for questions, given that we've had a couple of announcements in the last little while about lane closures and road flooding, I'm going to ask Director Perkins very quickly just to update us on those things, because I think there's nothing more frustrating than finding out about it a couple of days later or three days later. So the Chair or the warden is allowed to monkey around the schedule a little bit and reporting. So with that, I'll ask Director Perkins to offer us some comments. Thank you.
Good morning and thank you, Warden, and through you to county council. So the emergency management group for all of the county of Renfrew meets, we up their meetings to twice a week. It's a Zoom call or a Teams meeting. At this point right now, the flood warning along the Ottawa River has been extended. The county of Renfrew, we have no structures or roads closed at this time, but there are communities in our municipality, our partner municipalities, that have road closed. In Horton, for example, there's three closed. Broodinell-Lindock is, I think, three closed as well. But as it sits right now, the snow melt is, there's still snow, from the snow survey, there's still snow on Lake, in T-Lake in the upper reaches of the Ottawa River. They're filling, OPG is filling their Bark Lake area, Mountain Shute area. Renfrew Power Generations, our flows are declining on Round Lake. Rentfrew Power Generations, our flows are declining on Round Lake. Gold Lake should peak sometime in the last couple of days. And then the MRF, they're just continuing to monitor issues in their area. And with that said, there, as I said, the meetings have been up to twice a week, but we're hopeful that the melt will continue slow and steady. Interestingly enough, the MRF has a weather person that's on this call, that's specific to the MRF. And of course, that lady is, she's, I won't say doom and gloom, but she's very, very cautious to warn us that, you know, there's a weak low pressure moving through and there's rain and potential in the forecast. But as it sits right now, the flooding is subsiding on the river. So we're hopeful that it will continue. And again, no roads or structures closed for the county.
Great. Thank you very much. And with that, I'll move to the report. So questions, comments, concerns on item number one. Item number two, councillor from Adamston Bromley, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to, I'll defer to the Chair, probably to the Director. Within the status report, there's only five road projects identified, yet the variance report cites 18 over the course of the year. I wonder if you could speak to what the status of those are or if those would perhaps appear in future status reports?
Mr. Perkins?
Yes, thank you, Chair. The way this report is presented is two different groups, the infrastructure group and the operations group. So right now, underneath the infrastructure group, those five projects that are road projects are actually required engineering. So Mr. Hanraff and his group actually provides the status update for that. And then on page 307, you'll actually see the other road repairs. Then that's in the operations group. And again, Mr. Bulldog and his team, they provide the ongoing status for that. And then, of course, on the final page, on page 308, is the actual overall projects that both combined departments do. So with that said, hopefully that answers the question.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, Chair, did you want to offer comment? Thank you. Supplementary?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just to follow up, certainly the variance report has to do with the Treasury Department, the funding, et cetera, and what the status is. The status report though gives an indication of when the individual projects are to be tendered, awarded, construction start, construction end. And that was what I was kind of curious about, as to how we are moving along with respect to tenders across the 18 road projects anticipated in this year's program.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes, thank you, Chair, or Warden. And through you to councillor Donahue. Actually, we just approved tenders this morning for our first roads project, which is on County Road. And the staff are diligently working on getting more out. Other than that, the engineering group has closed, I think, five tenders for bridge structures and culverts so far. So things are progressing as anticipated.
Thank you. Supplementary?
Thank you. Perhaps that information then could be incorporated into the monthly status report, just to give an indication of what the, how each of the projects are progressing.
Thank you. No further questions, comments on item number two. So we'll move to item three. Item number four. Item five. Mr. Perkins, could you just elaborate? One of the questions we asked at Committee was what happens if the system goes down? And if there's a, if there's an ability to ensure that calls are answered? So if you could just elaborate on that, the answers you reassured Committee with.
Thank you, Warden. And through you to County Council. Yes, there is a backup system. It's a cellphone system. And the credit goes to the ladies that look after the CAC for us, Ms. Shepherd and Ms. St. Marie. They, it's a backdoor. It's not a solution. It's a backdoor way that they do have a backup. So, thank you.
The concern at Committee was that this has dragged on for some time. And the Committee, or the equipment is older. And there is some newer equipment at various departments that's sort of been patched on to this. And we were worried that at some point, the system wouldn't be able to accommodate. So that was the question. This is going to be an issue, I think, I know that we're going to have further comment on and will need to resolve relatively quickly. I think we need to offer reassurance to the public that we're on top of this. And it has dragged on, as noted, since, I think, at least, well, I can recall, at least 2009, but specifically 2014, there's been a couple of reports. So just, it's a bit of a heads up for Council that this is an impending problem to solve. Thank you. Councillor from Adamston Bromley, and then from North Algonquin, Wilberforce. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Sorry, it's caught the other corner of my eye.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just so that I'm understanding, because there was, there was an examination of the fire departments across the county, I believe that was in 2016. We're investigating some of the options. I know one of the things, one of the high-level things was whether it would continue as an analog system or move to a digital. I know that we've also discussed the, what I think is referred to as the network herein, which is the repeater stations and the hardware, et cetera. So when I was first reading that, I was wondering what that was. So it seems now that, and I stand to be corrected, perhaps through you, Mr. Warden, to the Chair. So is this a parallel system that is a completely separate system than that which is dispatching the ambulances? Certainly gets triggered through the 911 system, but ultimately, the operators that are housed in the CAC center in Rentfrew, if this is going to be fire, then they are utilizing a completely different system, right from the dispatch, the software, and all of the ancillary repeaters, such as to have a footprint across the County of Rentfrew. So this is, in fact, just within the dispatch center, the hardware, and it seems also the software. I cannot imagine, somewhere I saw that this is XP, I can't remember, I thought that that was mostly in museums at this point. I cannot, I cannot imagine that there are too many XP specialists left in sporting roles. But I wonder if you could just clarify, if through you, Mr. Warden, if Mr. Perkins could clarify that the only overlap here is with the operators over that, any 24-hour period? And other than that, this is a completely standalone system from soup to nuts?
Thank you. And just to editorialize, different, outdated, and disjointed is the system. And Mr. Perkins?
Yes, thank you, Warden. And through you to County Council. Yes, that's correct. The fire dispatch system is a separate entity from what the, what the CAC uses for ambulance dispatch. It actually sits on the side of their desk. It's, as councillor Donahue has pointed out, it's running on an XP system. It's very antiquated. Also, the raid, in their radio room, the radio systems are separate systems as well. One is, one is for ambulance and one is for, for fire communications. So what we've looked at here is replacing what's in the CAC. The larger system for the 17 municipalities that use it, save Iron Prior and the Algonquin, or the Pickwacknagun, Algonquin's a Pickwacknagun, they use this system as well. That's, that's going to be a much, much tougher nut to crack because as councillor Donahue pointed out, some chiefs want analog, some chiefs want fire. But the system that we're looking at is now advanced enough to handle both systems. And it works with their equipment that they have now. So we are going to come back with a more fulsome report to operations in May and hopefully have a recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm assuming part of the reason for giving you a little more information today is I'm assuming you're going to hear more at your home council desks. And it's good to be informed and forewarned ahead of time. Because that was one, I think, one of the issues the last time around was we weren't getting our information out quickly. And the rumor mill was making a whole pile of suggestions that were somewhat inaccurate and grandiose. So we're trying to stay on a little bit ahead of it this time. Thank you. Item number six, the councillor from Bonus Share Valley, and then from Whitewater, please.
I'm going to temper my rant. This is not a reflection on Mr. Perkins or his team. But once again, this is unacceptable on the part of Hydro. We have been patient, my residents have been patient, to the point of utter frustration now. And I have been in touch, somebody from the distribution team contacted me yesterday. And I do have a meeting with the Vice President of Distribution on Monday at 2:00. I'm a very patient person. I generally do not get angry. And this is now, I am now at the point of pure and unmitigated anger. And once again, Mr. Perkins, not a reflection on you. I know that the finger pointing between Hydro and Bell was epic. But knowing that this, this pole is standing in the way of a road that desperately needs rehabilitation is disgraceful. And so I will report back to you after my meeting on Monday. And Mr. Warden, if you would like to join, I am happy to have you in this conversation as it is a county road. But I'm the one that has to, has to appeal to my residents. And I'm beyond angry now. So, thank you. Once again, I will use the word unacceptable. Thanks.
Thank you. And with that, certainly if you want to send me the information, I'd be more than happy to sit in. And councillor Whitewater Region, then Adamston Bromley, please.
Thank you, Warden. I reserve my comments for item seven.
My apology. Adamston Bromley, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. By your leave, if I could also incorporate item 20, that was just part of the addendum that is speaking to a resolution to approve an expenditure on the relocation. So I believe that that is, and Class A will be a very refined, accurate estimation of the cost. I believe, going back even to 2022, when this roadworks were first being contemplated, planned, that these phases were known to both utilities, that is, to Bell and to Hydro One, that certainly in, as the work has progressed, it seems at a pace of a sloth. But it seems absurd that this is probably a year in, we're only now getting the estimate of what it will cost to do these. I cannot imagine that, that this is acceptable in any business. You know, if we were, when we were, through you, perhaps, Mr. Kelly, when we were anticipating the renovation to this very building that we're sitting in, this very room that we were sitting in, were we waiting a year before we got our Class A estimate from the time that we engaged? It is simply absurd. And echoing the comments of my colleague from, from Bonus Share Valley, this is something that is shameful. From, and I'll certainly, in deference to her comments, perhaps this is shared between the two utilities. Whatever the case may be, it is absolutely shameful.
Thank you. We did have a meeting about, and to send a letter asking for a meeting with anybody who has decision-making abilities within Hydro One and Bell to talk about this problem. It's no secret that we're not happy. And I personally have suggested that, not happy with the costing estimates that come out, the timeliness of their projects, the lack of coordination between Bell and Hydro. And when you take a look and you drive down a road and you see one pole and they've cut the top off because Hydro moved their lines and Bell can't do it for four years, and you've got these skinny little dumb poles sitting beside it with the top cut off with a notch in it, it's such a detriment to our community, just in terms of look. And so those are, those are some of the issues. So yet, we fully intend to engage as best we can, have a couple of strategies to try and get past the local level. I'm not sure who's making their decisions about timeliness and putting money into their construction budget, but that person needs to reevaluate how they're, how they're serving rural Ontario, but specifically our community. So we are, we do have a strategy going forward to try and get some more information and provide constructive comment and how to improve. So, thank you. And with that, we'll move to, seeing nothing else, we'll move to item number seven, if that's okay. And councillor from Whitewater.
Thanks, Warden. The question is really just about the future capital, the maintenance of that product once it is constructed. And I'm just wondering, is it, will it, is it planned to be included in our, in our fall review of our capital plan?
And Mr. Perkins, please.
Thank you, Warden. And through you. I'm not sure I understand the question.
I'm assuming the question is, when it's, when this is eventually constructed, will it be included in our plan? And then, once it is constructed, will it be a maintenance item for the County of Rentfrew?
Yes, thank you for the clarification. That's correct. Yes, it will, it will go into our asset management plan as a, as a segment for what was that intersection will now be a roundabout. And yes, we will be doing maintenance because it is still the County Road intersection.
Perfect. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you. Councillor from Town of Petawawa, please.
Thank you, Warden. Through you to Lee, I guess. Just on behalf of Petawawa and the council, I'd just like to thank the operations committee for proposing a letter of endorsement to the garrison for the construction of this roundabout, to solve what arguably, arguably is the worst traffic problem in Rentfrew County, I guess. So it'd be interesting to see how quickly the garrison moves on this. And I'm not sure if you have an update or not on the back exits and entrances on the Brindle Road Gate? Because I see on this that the roundabout would not proceed until that situation is taken care of.
And Mr. Perkins?
Thank you, Warden. And through you to councillor Service. Yes, that's correct. In speaking with the real estate people on base, their plan is to have the Brindle access to Highway 17 open prior to doing this development. So they are still very optimistic. They, they do go through a funding model that's quite different than what the County of Rentfrew would go through. So, but they are very optimistic. So we're hopeful that this all works for them.
I could add to that in that when we met with Colonel on this week, earlier this week, we did ask some questions about it and offer our assistance in acquiring a delegation to the Minister of Transportation, if necessary. And he was going to get back to us with a more fulsome briefing on the, on the progress. And if he needed our assistance, he would call on us. So we are trying to facilitate the Brindle Road exit. Seeing no further questions, move to number eight. Item number nine. Item 10. Item 11. Item 12. Item 13. Item 14. Item number 15. Item number 16. Item 17. Councillor from Town of Greater Madawaska, please.
Yes, thank you. Through you, Chair. Just looking at the pavement marking costing, there was a vast disparity between the company that got, or that's getting awarded the contract compared to one of the other ones. And having some background and knowledge in this, this concerns me is the reflectivity in road paint, and which is what we see at night on the roads. The paint goes down, then glass beads go on top. And I think we're, if I'm correct, and we're looking at the entire 816 kilometers of roadway in our township, just the cost of the glass beads, the reflectivity, is more than what this tender is. So my concern is, if they're tendering it for this, or if they're putting in a tender at this price, how is that going to affect our night vision of these roadways? I'll, just a general comment, I don't know the process that this went through. I don't know that there were standards within the contract or not. But just maybe, if they're not there in the future, we need to look at reflectivity and paint thickness and width. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Perkins, can you offer a comment?
Thank you, Warden. And through you to County Council. Currently, we do keep to the municipal specs standards. Unfortunately, we do no testing on what has actually been done. We've never done it in the past. It would be an extra for us to find a consultant that would come in and do that for us. But at times when they're putting it down, there are, there are supervision. Our staff is on hand for it. But again, we are, we are bound to the lowest price.
Thank you. Councillor, Bonus Share Valley, please.
Thanks. I just want to follow up on what my colleague just asked. Mr. Perkins?
Mr. Perkins, we do have the reflectivity gun for signage. Would it work on the, it will not. Okay. Just, it was a shot in the dark.
Thank you, councillor Abbotson Bromley.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. My question is much more mundane. I'm curious how this compares to what the anticipated budget was?
Oh, thank you. This is actually 35% higher than last year. So we did, we did factor that into our budget when, for 2023, that we were expecting increases. They actually sent us a memo last year describing the increases in paint to us.
Supplementary?
So this is within budget, then?
Sorry, yes, through you, Warden. Yes, that's correct. It is, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. No further comments, questions? We'll move on to item number 18. And I have to admit, I love how we, how we title things. Ed Mansky Swamp Culvert is, I think I'm going to get a T-shirt for that one. Item number 19. Item number 20. Item number 21. Report as a whole? Could I have a mover, please?
So moved, Warden, need more?
Thank you. You've heard the motion. With that, I'll call a question. All those in favor? Opposed? None? Thank you, council. And thank you. So with that, we'll move to the Health Committee. And councillor Donohue, please.
I'm sorry, I was unprepared. I thought we would be returning to the Community Services Committee.
No, I'm, I'm trying to manipulate the schedule so that we end at 11:45, and I recognize that you have a special announcement to make at the end of your, your report.
Absolutely. Thank you. Nature was kind of calling. I thought I was going to have an opportunity.
Let me look at the, I think the, yes, we'll take five minutes of the report. We should be able to.
That is quite a relief. Thank you very much to my colleague from Bonnershire Valley.
With that, I'll call on the Chair of the Health Committee, please.
Thank you very much for your indulgence, Mr. Warden. I am a professional, I was prepared to carry through, but it would have been in some discomfort.
And with some expediency, I imagine.
It probably would have been expedited, no question. Members of County Council, we, your Health Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Item one is RCV-TAC announcement. Thrilled, actually, that we had confirmation from MPB John Jakobuski of the permanent funding of VTAC moving forward. This, I'm certain that everyone in the room will have, whether live or in follow-up, will have seen news reports on the presentation by Mr. Jakobuski made at the Renfrew County place. So after much perseverance, rolling up the sleeves, and a lot of dedicated work by a lot of people that are still active or that have worked on this file, it has borne fruit. Item number two is COVID funding for the paramedic service. This is latterly announced funding. As I understand, largely, we have identified the eligible COVID expenditures over the course of 2022. Very pleased nonetheless that the province is recognizing that there are still COVID expenditures being incurred. Item number three is long-term care homes level of care per diem funding. Ultimately, at budget time, council may recall that the discussion was that the CMI, the Case Mix Index, was frozen moving forward. In that event, it certainly was also underscored that, in fact, Miramishy Homes probably was receiving more than the CMI had suggested with Bonner Manor was receiving less, or it could have been vice versa. In the end, it was unfrozen, which was not actually beneficial to the county of Renfrew. Yet nonetheless, should there be a continuing adherence to CMI or even the tacit wink to CMI moving forward, it will be nonetheless a step forward. Item number four is accreditation Canada in the Governance Committee. This report is speaking specifically to the survey, the online survey, that was undertaken by the Health Committee. And you'll note, certainly within the report, at the end of June will be the process moving forward. As noted to council previously, we are bringing the accreditation of both the Manor and the Lodge into the same timeline, so that those accreditations will be completed at the same time. Heretofore, they have been two separate processes. Moving on then, Mr. Warden, to bylaws. Item five is Renfrew County Virtual Triage and Assessment Centre. It is Resolution Number H-CC-23-04-34. Moved by myself, seconded by committee, that County Council adopt a bylaw authorizing the warden and CAO clerk to sign the lease agreement and letter of agreement between the County of Renfrew and Care4 Health and Community Services to lease office space at 425 Cecilia Street, Pembroke for tenancy of the Renfrew County Virtual Triage and Assessment Centre for a term of one year, April 1st, 2023, through March 31st, 2024. The background is attached, as council is aware. There was a very short-term lease that was entered into with Care4 until such time as we had confirmation of the permanency of the funding for VTAC. Item six, Long Term Care Service Accountability Agreement, ELSA, Resolution Number H-CC-23-04-38. Moved once again by myself, seconded by committee, that County Council authorize the warden and Chief Administrative Officer Clerk to sign the Long Term Care Service Accountability Agreements from April 1st, 2023, until March 31st, 2024, between Ontario Health and each of Bonner Manor and Miramishy Lodge for submission by the Ontario Health approved extended deadline of April 27th, 2023. And further, that County Council pass a bylaw to amend, Bylaw 30-22, being a bylaw authorizing the warden and clerk to continue the Long Term Care Service Accountability Agreements. Once again, Mr. Warden, the background is attached. Item seven, Bonner Manor Senior Adult Day Program Multi-Sector Service Accountability Agreement, which is MSA, Resolution Number H-CC-23-04-39. Moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that County Council authorize the warden and Chief Administrative Officer Clerk to sign the Multi-Sector Service Accountability Agreement from April 1st, 2023, to March 31st, 2024, between Ontario Health and Bonner Manor Senior Adult Day Program for submission by the Ontario Health approved extended deadline of April 27th, 2023. And further, that County Council pass a bylaw to amend Bylaw 31-22, being a bylaw authorizing the warden and clerk to continue the Multi-Sector Service Accountability Agreement. And again, Mr. Warden, the background is attached. All of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair, along with Committee members Emo Grylls, Jan Murphy, Nicholson, Weir, and Wilmer.
Thank you. We'll move through the report, and then I'll ask you for your announcement at the end of the report. With that, item number one, questions, comments, concerns from members of council. Seeing none, item number two. Item three. Item number four. Item number five. And I just have a couple of really quick questions. One is, I know as we were speeding towards the announcement, we did make a motion to put some money aside from our reserves to cover the costings. So do, a question of process, do we need to repeal that motion? I'm a little worried that it might lead to confusion with the province on a day of accounting at some point. They're expecting that to be in there. So just a quick question, and I see everybody shaking their head, no, I'm quite content with that. Mr. Kelly.
I suppose for the audio record, I don't believe there's a, no, I don't believe that that's necessary. That was a motion just in case if we won't use it now with that funding, so we're free and clear with that type of governance motion, you're fine.
Okay, thank you. Money has led to many an unpleasant argument. And then the last thing was, I believe there were some contracts with staff. Have we taken care of all those things and got them re-upped and all the things that we were supposed to do?
Again, Warden, through you and to County Council, we are in the midst of formalizing some of those relationships and redefining some of those roles as we move forward throughout the next year.
Great, thank you. Those are just housekeeping things that, when I was going through my notes, I made mention to myself. Thank you. Item number six. Item number seven. Counselor, Whitewater Region, please.
Warden, if a comment more than anything, I just want to emphasize the importance of this Adult Day Program as it supports our seniors in our community. And just like we saw this morning at the delegation, it's just another one of those things that are helping our seniors age in place or helping their loved ones that are supporting their partners get some free time and be able to take advantage of the Adult Day Program. And I know that this is only one example provided by the county. There are other organizations in our county that provide this similar program, and it's vital. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Comments, questions, concerns on the report as a whole? Seeing none, a mover, please?
So moved, Mr. Warden.
Thank you very much. You've heard the motion, you've heard the information. All those in favor? Opposed, none, it's carried, thank you very much, council. And with that, Chair Donoghue, I turn the meeting over to you and to Chief Nolan.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, much appreciate that. Just as preamble, I'd like to draw everyone's attention to 33 years ago. Thirty-three years ago, there was no internet, there were no cell phones, there was no social media. A good time, a happy time, a pleasant time. It seems a lifetime ago, and I suppose to some degree it is a lifetime ago. But 33 years ago, a young man by the name of Brian Leahy became a paramedic at that time within the Pembroke Regional Hospital that was servicing the Pembroke area and the Eaganville area. This is when there were perhaps some areas that were serviced by paramedics. Moving on, Deputy Chief Leahy continued to work in the same place, but now PRH was administering the countywide program for the paramedic service. This was after the devolution downloading wherein the municipal governance became responsible for half of the cost. And initially, that was fostered and facilitated through a contract, as I understand, with Pembroke Regional Hospital, where it was across the broader county of Renfrew. And then ultimately into the County of Renfrew Paramedic Service. And I know that Brian was an integral architect of that transition from the former local and regional ambulance services into the amalgamated, if you will, the much broader and regional paramedic services. And I know that Brian's fingerprints are all over what we have today. I will note that this was wrenching. It's not so long ago, within the last six months, in the 25-years-ago column, the then-warden for the County of Renfrew, there was much gnashing and tearing of hair over the downloading of the paramedic service to the county, or two counties, or regional governments. And I think as the time has passed, I would only kicking and screaming, give it up. We have demonstrated the innovation that is being driven by our community, by our rural and remote populations. And I know that Brian has a very large role in the architecture of what we have now come to recognize as the paramedic service. I certainly must say that it is bittersweet, and I'm somewhat surprised because it seems like an early retirement, it's only 33 years, Brian. Not sure that you're really feeling the community here. It does, it is an unfortunate thing that Brian's orbit around the sun has been a different one than mine. I've only overlapped on about 25% of Brian's time in the paramedic service, but his has been an incredible contribution, even in the time that I've known. Brian is certainly in his civilian life is a horse whisperer, but I think he is also a citizen whisperer, whether it's responding to the needs of patients in our community as he has responded to them, whether it is responding to vendors and wondering why we have not gotten our ambulances or our IRVs. And I think that a strength that Brian brings to this, having a foot perhaps in both the province of Quebec and in the province of Ontario, I think Brian has an ear for the various dialects that exist across the county of Renfrew. We all speak English, but it's all just a little bit different. And Brian, I'm pretty sure, is cognizant of each and every one of those. So as I'd indicated, Mr. Warden, more is the pity that I have only moved in Brian's orbit for a short period. So I will certainly extend congratulations, my heartfelt thank you for his incredible service to our community. But perhaps more of the background of the time before me, I will yield to Chief Nolan.
Thank you, as Chief Nolan assumes his position, his rightful position at the podium, because I think he owns it now. We'll, I'd like to draw your attention to Brian sitting quietly in the back corner of the room. The rest of us who are more brassy and less accomplished would sit in the front, but this is Brian's nature to sit there, so thank you, Brian. Just wanted to make note of that. Chief Nolan.
Thank you for the segue, and through you, Mr. Warden, to members of council. Why don't we have Brian come up to the front, actually? Because I'm not sure if this is a roast, a toast, or an Irish wake. But I think certainly high time for Brian to come out of those shadows and just celebrate his career and a little bit of his past with all of us. Maybe we'll go to the first photo, we've just got a couple of photos here for Brian. Up Brian with you. And I'm very pleased to say that I've known Brian for those 33 years. We actually went to college together at Algonquin to become paramedics. And it's not why he got his job. But this is the Brian that I first remember, sort of a Captain America-looking fellow with great hair and a sturdy chin. But more importantly, a real sense of wisdom and calm in terms of how he's not only taken on life, but taken on his job here in the county in many roles. Some of you may not know that Brian's first career was actually aviation, amongst other jobs, on the farm and in the bush. But, so when Brian came to become a paramedic, he had already had a very fruitful career, flying bush planes, flying commercial aircraft, and was one of the senior citizens in our class back 33 years ago. And he wasn't able to hold us back then either. So, you know, on the next slide, you know, Brian has seen this community in many ways, not to mention the thousands of paramedic calls that he's done over his career and the lives that he's touched in that way. He's also worked with many of the different ranks, and this is from his time with Pembroke Regional Hospital. And to some of you, there may be some familiar faces in that crowd. But, you know, I'm very proud to say on the next slide that Brian was more known for actually hanging out at the front desk of the county than he was necessarily working on an ambulance. So it was not uncommon for me to say, Rhonda, can you please get him away from the front desk? So thank you so much, Connie, for dragging him to the front desk and entertaining Brian. But this is what we call interdepartmental relations. And since I had to pull him back, I think things have fallen apart. So, that's why we got rid of the front desk, yeah. Yeah, so Brian's no longer holding it up. And I think he was being arrested in that shot as well for a charity function. So maybe just flip through a couple of quick slides here. You know, Brian's always good for a sense of humor, always great to engage at all levels of the organization, and truly knows this community better than anybody that I know within the paramedic service. He'll sorely be missed for that. I don't know what he's eating there, but it's not an uncommon conversation within the department that if anybody has anything left on his plate, send it to Brian. So, you know, Brian has also been one of the deputies. So that's Michelle Rouay. Michelle was a previous deputy that had retired from the service, and of course, Matt Grenier in the picture as well. So, you know, we've had a long, long time together. I don't even know what the number is in terms of the number of years with the county, Brian, do you know? Yeah, almost 20 years here at the county in this role since 2000, when it transitioned to PRH, and then a few years later when it came to the county. So very humbled to have had Brian leading the service. I know I spent a lot of time at this microphone, a lot of time at committee and council. But Brian, Michelle, Matthew, the commanders and the frontline staff are really the ones to be credited with the innovation, with making things happen, because otherwise, there just would have been good ideas that went nowhere. And in fact, many of the ideas came from Brian, from the staff, in terms of how we've evergreened the service with committee and council's support. And that's been invaluable, Brian's relationship in the community. I said at Health Committee, I can't walk in the Irving without a waitress rushing over to be disappointed that it's me in uniform and not him. You know, fish Fridays or whatever it is over there are a staple for Brian, and I get hugs just because people know Brian and don't know me. So, you know, I've been grateful for that throughout my career as well. Maybe on the next slide, if I could. You know, Brian has absolutely been one of the innovators within the service through the drone program. Brian's history in commercial aviation allowed us to work with Transport Canada, and in fact, gave Transport Canada the confidence to trust us to be able to fly a drone higher and further than anybody else in Canada, and in fact, change the regulations to allow us to do it because Brian was sitting at the table. Brian was able to speak the speak with Transport Canada. He was able to convince them that we had a mission and a purpose that was safer than not being able to put these tools in the hands of our own staff. So, you know, when you think about the legacy that comes with that level of trust at all levels of government, and as well, Brian's ability to take multiple disciplines, package it together, and allow us to do great things with that program, let alone all of the work that the paramedics do on a day-to-day basis. It's been an incredible honor to serve with Brian, to be Brian's friend, Brian's neighbor. And I think there are many people in this county that would join me in celebrating that with Brian. On the next slide, if I could, you know, Brian's taken a number of different places. Not uncommon to see Brian at the annual gala. Brian has friends not only across Ontario, but in fact, around the world in paramedicine. He did speak at a conference in London, England, related to the drone program, and put our counties' best foot forward on a number of occasions in many different settings. So we're very proud of all of that work that you've done, Brian, because he's shown up not only in tuxedo or rubber boots, but he's also shown up in many strange places, doing many strange things, I think, on the next slide, where, you know, this is probably the best Brian that I know. And really, he was actually pointing at the drone at the time. But, you know, Brian truly has been a visionary. He's been a leader, is a leader, and not only is a good friend, but is an amazing neighbor to all of us in Renfrew County. So for that, Brian, I want to thank you. I'd like on the next slide to invite all of you to Brian's send-off. The Saturday, we're going to be at Anthony's, anybody's welcome to come, including anybody online that has well wishes for Brian after 8 o'clock, because we want to give him the send-off he deserves and the acknowledgement for the incredible legacy that he leaves behind and all of the service that he's provided. It's not been all that uncommon that I phoned Brian's house on the weekend, where Brian lives, his cell service isn't that great. So it's Lori, actually, who deserves much of the credit. Lori and Brian's family, Lori's wife is here with us today, are the ones who allow him to be able to give, day or night, 365 to the community. I've woken up, Lori have, as have other staff, to be able to say, we need Brian. And Brian's first question is always, where do you need me? It's never a question, it's never another priority, and I'm sure he's stood up from Easter dinner and had to go and take a call or step out or, you know, support the community and our staff in different ways. So Anthony's 8 o'clock on Saturday, if you want to go from the roast to the toast, and this should be our Irish week to celebrate you, Brian, and to remember all of the incredible contributions that you've made. So thank you.
Through you, Warden, to committee and guests. Pardon me, kind words indeed, thank you, thank you so much. I first have to acknowledge my wife at the back of the room, Lori, thank you for being here today. It's very fitting that Lori is embedded at the back of the room with the other women in my life who try to keep me on the straight and narrow, only with moderate success, mind you, but thank you, thank you for being here. You know, that smile you see painted on Lori's face is very practiced. Lori retired recently as well, so she's at the house to herself, and now she's getting twice the Brian on half the money. So it's well-practiced, and thank you for putting on that brave face, Lori. Again, thank you so much. Listen, the, I appreciate the accolades. However, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that the great work that the frontline paramedics, the management and administration team in conjunction with our partners in dispatch, the great work they perform every day, and the initiatives we've been able to enact are only possible because of the great support that we've received from these chambers. So for that, I thank you.
So, thank you very much. And just to add, we've been very fortunate, Brian has a way of treating all of us with respect and deference and good information. You don't have to be sitting in his chair, you can even sit in any one of the chairs. And he does that also to the community, with our partners and with people who want information. So it's a rare skill to be able to do that. Some of us practice it, not as fully and as completely as we should, but he's been a role model for many of us outside of his profession. And professionally, I often leaned on Brian for quick comment or patching together services when I was working with community mental health and with children's aid over the years. And I first met Brian a long time ago when he was wearing the pale blue shirts that Ontario used to buy by the million, so that OPP had them, and I believe LCBO and the paramedics all had the same shade of blue shirt. And so I met Brian a long time ago at PRH. So Brian, thank you very much on a personal level and representing our community. You've been an awesome, awesome person to deal with and to guide us, so thank you. And with that, we are trying desperately, lunch is warm, I got here 11:45, it'll still be warm. And so with that, if you could all join us for lunch, and we'll be back here at 1 o'clock. Thank you.
So, Council with your indulgence, we'd like to move forward to development of property. But prior to that, if we could have a motion to wind close, to discuss property acquisitions. Motion from member of Kill, Hagerty Richards, second by a member from Laurentian Hills. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's Kerry. Thank you.
Good afternoon again, and thank you very much to our viewing public for their patience. And with that, I would like to call on the Chair of Development and Property, please.
Thank you, Warden. To the Council of the Corporation of the County of Renfrew and members of County Council, we, our Development and Property Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Information item number one is June Development and Property Committee meeting location. And as you can see from the attached information, that the June meeting is being planned for the township of McNabb-Brayside. Item number two is the Ontario Environmental Assessment Program. And as you can see as well with the attached information, comments can be made on the Environmental Registry of Ontario until May the 9th, 2023. Item number three is the Community Economic Development, excuse me, 101 Workshop. And this is a partnership with the Township of Whitewater Region, the Economic Development Division, and is being hosted by the Ontario Ministry of Agriculture, Food and Rural Affairs. And it will be at the Cobden Legion on May the 3rd from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Item number four is the Ontario East Municipal Conference 2023. And once again, this conference is being held in Ottawa and not Cornwall this year. And the date, I believe, has also been changed to September 6th to the 8th, 2023, at the Ontario, sorry, at the Ottawa Conference and Events Centre and the Courtyard Marriott Hotel. Item number five is the Culinary Tourism Strategy. And the background information and the PowerPoint presentation is attached. And this was a very, very interesting strategy that has been presented by the Ottawa Valley Tourist Association. And we certainly look forward to moving forward with this initiative in the next three years. Moving on to bylaws. Item number six is the Ottawa Valley Tourist Association, County of Renfrew and City of Pembroke Agreement. Resolution number DP-CC-23-04-43, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that County Council pass a bylaw to authorize the Warden and Clerk to enter into a formal agreement with the City of Pembroke and the Ottawa Valley Tourist Association with respect to the ongoing financial and program participation in a destination marketing organization for a five-year term commencing on January the 1st, 2023. And further that bylaw, 32-18, being a bylaw to execute an agreement with the City of Pembroke and the Ottawa Valley Tourist Association regarding financial support for tourism promotion and development for the 2018 to 2022 term be repealed. And the background information is there. Item number seven is the OPA 35, Bill 109 and Bill 23 Implementation. Resolution number DP-CC-23-04-46, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that County Council pass a bylaw to adopt and approve Official Plan Amendment Number 35. And the background information is there. And moving on to addendums. Item number eight is a letter of support for the Fiber Network Project. Resolution number DP-CC-23-04-53, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that County Council send a letter under the Warden's signature expressing the County of Renfrew's support to Videotron Freedom Mobile in their intent to submit a request for funding to build and upgrade fiber transport network in Renfrew County through the CRTC broadband fund. And finally, item number nine is Bill 97, Helping Home Buyers Protecting Tenants Act 2023 and the Provincial Policy Statement. Resolution number DP-CC-23-04-54, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that County Council direct staff to continue engagement with local municipalities regarding potential impacts as a result of the proposed Bill 97, Helping Home Buyers Protecting Tenants Act, and changes to the Provincial Policy Statement. And if I could, with your indulgent, Warden, I would like to share with County Council the award winners from the OVTA AGM yesterday.
Yes, please.
So the first category was the Tourism Champion Award. And this award was presented to Theresa Hebb, who is a member, who is an active tourism champion for the Ottawa Valley. And she's the, I believe, she's the Chair of the Ottawa Valley Active, or the the Snow, the Renfrew County ATV.
Yes.
Yes, yes. The second category was for Business Organisation of the Year. And the winner was the Matawaska Canoe Centre. And they have been basically teaching and sharing their skills and mentorship for new and existing paddlers. Item number four is the, or item number three is the Event of the Year Award. And this was awarded to the Multicultural Festival in Pembroke. And it has grown from a very small start with a few people to a full-day event. And apparently, this year, it is going to be a two-day event. The next award was for the Sustainability Champion Award. And that one went to the Somewhere Inn in Calabogie. And again, they have been certified through the Green Step Rainbow Program. And they provide a sustainable, inclusive, and year-round employment opportunity with a focus on growth, education, and mental and physical wellbeing. The New Product Award went to New Tourism Product Award, went to the Rio Tap and Grill. And that was for their rooftop patio and the magnificent view of the Bonture River. And the Tourism Marketing Award went to the Oi La Cafe in Calabogie. And they use a promotional strategy with consistency that involves daily Instagram stories, business partnerships, and social media giveaways, which keep clients coming back for more. And I just wanted to say on behalf of myself and County Council, what a fantastic job that Melissa Markwitz and her staff did in putting together the whole program and the AGM. And it was very well attended, and it was an excellent location in spite of the snowflurries we witnessed during the day. But I think everybody thoroughly enjoyed that. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we'll go back through the report.
Sorry, I just have to finish.
Certainly.
I forgot my last part, which is all respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and Committee Members Bennett, Emo, Lynch, Mackenzie, Service, Watt, and Weir. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you. I was sure I'd heard that. And back through the report, comments, questions, and concerns from everyone on Council? For item number one. Item number two. Item number three. Just a reminder, that's May the 3rd, 9 till 12, at the Cobden Legion. I think initially it was going to be the Egg Hall, but it's moved to the Legion now. So that's a pretty, a great, a grave agenda for us. Item number four, Ontario East, moving to Ottawa, which makes navigating or not navigating the Navsite or Centre a very beautiful occasion to get away from that. Item number five, the Culinary Tourism Strategy. Again, it's a kickoff on May the 9th from 8:30 to 12 in McNabb Township. And this is a neat, neat initiative. I think you'll be really excited by it. They talked about telling a story and attaching the food adventure to, which is always, a food adventure is a great idea, I think, to other facets of our tourism, our tourism infrastructure. So this is a, I think you're going to really enjoy this. And with that, we'll move to item number six. And again, we talked yesterday about the importance of this and thanked the Board for making this work, because, you know, this is a very special partnership. So congratulations to the OVTA Board and staff for making this, the first five-year contract worked out really well, agreement, sorry, and to enter into the second one. It's been a great five years with virtually no difficulties, which hadn't always been the path, occurred in the past. So kudos to OVTA Board and to staff for making this work. Item number seven. And with that, we'll move to item number eight. Item number nine. And the report as a whole. Can I have a mover, please?
So moved, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. You've heard the report, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's Carrie. Thank you very much. And with that, we'll move to Community Services, please, and thank you for your patience as we move the agenda around.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. To the Council of the Corporation of the County of Renfrew, members of County Council, we, your Community Services Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Information item number one, 202 Cecil Street, Pembroke, building removal and design build. So the Renfrew County Housing Corporation has demolished a single-family unit structure and will be replaced by a two-unit structure. Resolutions, number two, Business Case Staffing Proposal. Resolution number CS-CC-23-04-15, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that County Council approve the transition of the two licensed home visitor positions within the childcare and early-years division from full-time equivalent contract to full-time permanent with benefits. So this has been consistent growth over the years, and as there are currently seven homes providing. There's more background there. Item number three is a Business Case for Staffing Proposal. Resolution number CS-CC-23-04-16, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that County Council approves an additional full-time permanent inclusion coordinator position with benefits within the childcare and early-years division. The background is there, and once again, consistent growth, with consistent growth, we need to increase. Bylaws, amendment, sorry, number four, Amendment to Bylaw 14-15, County of Renfrew Special Needs Resourcing. Resolution number CS-CC-23-04-17, moved by the Chair, seconded by Committee, that County Council approve that bylaw, number 14-15, authorizing the County of Renfrew to enter into an agreement with childcare agencies and recreation programs for special needs resourcing funding, be amended to enter into a special needs resourcing agreement with Wise Owl Childcare Centre. And the background is there. Item number five, Amendment to Bylaw 50-17, County of Renfrew New Licensed Home Agreement. Resolution number CS-CC-23-04-18, moved by myself, seconded by Committee, that County Council approve that bylaw, number 50-17, authorizing the County of Renfrew to enter into an agreement with licensed home childcare service providers, be amended to enter into an agreement with Tiffany Plowman from Pembroke. As well, the background is there. All of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and Committee Members, Emo, Grills, Mayville, Nicholson, and Service.
Thank you, Chair. And I'll come back to you after we do the report for an announcement. So with that, Council, comments, questions, concerns on item number one. Glad to see this occurring, that we took a depreciated and, I would suggest, decrepit asset and are renewing it and refreshing it. So that speaks well for the future and our management of our assets. Item number two. I, I'm sorry, Counselor from North Agona Wilberforce?
Yes, thank you, Warden. And I think this is a great idea. I would assume that it will provide a little more stability, being that it's a full-time position with the county. And I guess my question is, the people that are doing the positions now, will they be the ones that will be continuing, moving forward?
Ms. Lapine, please.
Thank you. And through you, Warden, to Council, there will be a competitive process in which the current contract candidates can compete for the position. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions on that item. Item number three, please. And we'll move to item number four. Item five. The report as a whole. Could I have a mover, please? So moved. And so you've heard the motion. All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's Carrie. Thank you very much. And you have a special announcement you'd like to make?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. So on Friday, April 16th, the County of Renfrew issued a media release announcing that the Ontario Government Ontario Government has increased the funding for the homelessness provincial program and Indigenous support housing program by $202 million provincially. This additional funding will help those experiencing or who are at risk of homelessness and will support community organizations delivering supportive housing. The funds from the homelessness prevention program are used to cover a variety of housing and homelessness supports, some of which are emergency shelter program, the rent supplement program, rental allowance program, and other related housing supports. So for the County of Renfrew, the program fiscal year allocation amounts, 99% increase for this year and the following two years, which is great news. We're very grateful and thankful for this additional funding, and our staff are working diligently on this funding increase to ensure that these funds are used where they need is the greatest. So we're very thankful to the provincial government for this boost in funding. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, seeing no comments or questions, we'll move to Chair of Finance, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm feeling a little left out. I don't have a special announcement when I'm done. To the Council of the Corporation of the County of Renfrew, members of County Council, we, your Finance and Administration Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Under information item number one, the Wardens Golf Tournament will take place on Thursday, September 21st at Dragonfly. I will probably have a cold that day. Number two is the Annual Service Awards Dinner. So pleased to see this back. It will be held on Thursday, November 23rd, and further details will follow. Number three is the 2023 Annual Repayment Limit, and there is an appendix that is a letter from the Municipal Finance Policy Branch. Number four are the unaudited 2022 Financial Statements, and they are there for your perusal. Number five is the COVID-19 Corporate Financial Summary to December 31st, 2022, and they're attached as appendix three, is the chart summarizing the COVID-related initiatives. Number six, Policy GA06 is our investment policy, and there is also an appendix there. Number four, showing our investment portfolio. As I go through here. Number seven are the Proposed Amendments to the Provincial Offences Act, and there is a letter from Attorney General Doug Downey. Number eight is the Staff Engagements Survey. I hope that you all took a few moments to read Appendix Six. It was the presentation relating to the staff engagement. It is very, very, very interesting, and I'm sure if you have any questions, Mr. Kelly would be happy to answer. Under Resolutions, September Standing Committee Meetings, Resolution FACC 23-04-34. Moved by myself as Chair, seconded by Committee, that County Council approve that the September Standing Committees be held as follows. September 12th at 9:30 a.m., Development and Property. September 12th at 1 p.m., Operations. September 13th at 9:30 a.m., Health Committee. September 13th at 1 p.m., Community Services. And September 14th at 9:30, Finance and Admin. And that is, of course, due to the rescheduling of the OEMC Conference. Number 10, 2023 Federation of Canadian Municipalities Membership Dues. Resolution FACC 23-04-36. Moved by the Chair, seconded by Committee, that County Council approve that the 2023 Membership Fee to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities in the amount of $23,093.95, including HST, be approved. And there's some background there showing some of the increases. Number 11 is the County of Renfrew Community Paramedic Reserve. Resolution number FACC 23-04-37. Moved by the Chair, seconded by Committee, that County Council approve the use of $112,879.25 from the existing community paramedic reserve to cover the operating deficit within the community paramedic long-term care program as at December 31st, 2022. Under Bylaws, 2023 Tax Policy. Resolution number FACC 23-04-39. Moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that County Council adopt a bylaw setting the starting 2023 tax ratios for county purposes and lower-tier purposes for the year 2023. Resolution number FACC 23-04-40. Moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that County Council approve that the 2023 tax rate bylaw and ratio bylaw include a revenue-neutral ratio for the landfill class at 1.189066. Boy, that's almost pi. Thought we were going into a big... You like it? Resolution number FACC 23-04-41. Moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that County Council approve a final reduction in the broad industrial ratio down to the provincial threshold of 2.63, which was phased over in a two-year period, beginning with the 2022 taxation cycle. And there is a lot of information to back up those resolutions. Number 13, 2023 County of Renfrew Tax Rate Bylaw. Resolution number FACC 23-04-42. Moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that County Council adopt a bylaw to establish the 2023 tax rates for the County of Renfrew purposes. Number 14, Corporate Policies and Procedures for Human Resources. Resolution number FACC-23-04-43. Moved by the Chair, seconded by Committee, that County Council approve Corporate Policies J-04, Employee Referral Bonus Program, and J-05, Employee Recognition Program. And further than a bylaw to amend, bylaw 63-03, being a bylaw to establish human resources, corporate policies, and procedures for the County of Renfrew be adopted. And there's background there. All of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and Committee Members, Bros, Doncaster, Dunhu, Emo, Jardini, Jan, and Mayville. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. And questions, comments, concerns from members of council on item number one? Item number two. Great to see the Annual Service Dinner back again. It's a really enjoyable evening for those of you who haven't attended one before. It's nice to hear the stories and honor the people that have worked so hard to make... To achieve so many successes on behalf of us and our community. Excuse me. Item number three. Item four. Councillor Adam St. Bromley, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. I wonder through you, Mr. Warden, if... I know that each of the committees received the unaudited financial statements as it pertained to the particular committees, while FNA, Finance Administration Committee, did kind of receive the corporate... It was primarily the departments that do report up through FNA, but it largely also was describing the corporate year-end, et cetera, unaudited. And I'm fairly certain probably there will be other members of council that were like me at FNA suggesting that what an incredible budgeting process we had gone through, obviously, in 2022, that we landed at zero as a surplus deficit, when in fact, there is some more background to that. And perhaps council also noticed in the expenses... I'm not sure what... It's on page 366. Financial expenses, a pretty substantial additional transfer to reserves. So I wonder if Mr. Foss could highlight that conversation. At FNA, it was discussed that, in fact, there was a surplus, but because of the resolution directing that the Algonquin Trail attached to be the first to attach to any surpluses be accommodated first. So I'm wondering if Mr. Foss could kind of review that for the balance of council that was not at FNA.
Mr. Foss, please.
Thank you, Warden, and good afternoon, members of County Council. I believe that the question today is with respect to the fact that we're not perfect when it comes to developing a municipal budget, certainly for the general revenue fund, and the fact that we came in at exactly what our budget was, at a $0 surplus was not coincidental, and it wasn't really the result of really, really good budgeting. Our corporate surplus for the general revenue fund was, in fact, $716,225. But a number of years ago, a previous council had directed that we move forward with a rather large project related to the Algonquin Trail and the completion of the Algonquin Trail through a series of phases, if you will. And the financing for that trail was intended to be covered through our reserves. But the caveat was, and the resolution that a previous council adopted, was that there would be a first charge against any future County of Renfrew surplus to repay the dollars that we used from reserves with respect to this phased-in Algonquin Trail project. And so this year, 2022, was the first year where we had an operating surplus within the general fund of $716,000. And those dollars then were transferred back to the Working Capital Reserve, where we borrowed the money in... For the purpose of repaying the trail. So I believe that was the question, and that was really the surplus that we created and the repayment then to the building reserve of the 2022 general fund surplus. Thank you.
Thank you. supplementary, Adam St. Bromley?
Thank you once again. Mr. Warden, for council's benefit, by the way, the page that I have open with respect to the unaudited financials is page 366 of today's report. So I also wanted to put in front of council that you will note, the very, very bottom-line item just above the summation of total expenses, a pretty significant additional transfer to reserves of $3.4 million. And so certainly the $3.4 million, as was discussed at Finance Administration, did incorporate the $716,000. That was the general surplus that was applied towards the debt obligation, the internal debt obligation to reserves for the Algonquin Trail. But I wanted to follow up with this myself, because I didn't fully grasp this afterwards from Finance and Admin. So I think the balance of the additional transfer to reserves was the now CCBF, Canada Community Building Fund, formerly gas tax, federal gas tax, it was often referred to, and that that was just a shade under $2.7 million. So I just... And those two issues, those two particular items accounted for the full $3.4 million. But I just wanted to follow up. So those funds, when they were transferred to reserve, because those were deferred revenues for whatever arcane reasons that PSAB requires, those had to be recognized as deferred revenue as opposed to reserve. So when they were transferred to reserve in 2014, were they fully utilized... Yes, sorry, in 2022? Sorry to add confusion. When those were transferred to reserves in 2022, were they fully utilized? Or are they... Do they continue to be a deferred revenue that's available for 2023 expenditures as well?
Mr. Foss, please.
Thank you, Warden. So gas tax funding that was received this year in 2022 was $5,489,044.68. We enjoyed the benefit of the doubling of the CCBF, or the former gas tax fund. Our budget only reflected an original amount of $2,793,000. So that additional dollars, or the dollars that the councillor has identified, of $2,695,000, all of those monies that were received were transferred to reserve, and all of those reserve dollars were spent in 2022 on Public Works, Capital Works Project. So we have no dollars available to us to carry forward. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, any further questions, comments? I always make this comment, but the... I wish they'd use some different language. That last line in this item where it says the 2022 accumulated surplus, and they list a $352 million number just drives me nuts. I wish there was a different way of expressing it so people don't assume there's bags of money under every chair. But that's something we ought to talk to PSAB about. And so with that, we'll move to number five. Number six. And moving over to number seven. Number eight. Number nine. And number 10. Number 11. And number 12. And number 13. And with that, number 14. On the report as a whole. Could I have a mover, please?
So moved, Warden.
Thank you. So you've heard the report. You've heard the motion. Any further questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you, council. And we will move to bylaws. So if I could have a bylaws, a motion, please. If the bylaws listed as and on item 13 and hatched and attached here to Schedule A on the County Council Agenda dated April 26th be deemed read three times in past. Mover, please. Mover from Member Township of Horton. And seconder, Member from Madawaska Valley. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you very much. And now we will move to the outside boards, our written reports. Nothing to report from Emo and Chalk River Stewardship Council. Member from Arm Prior, please.
Thank you, Warden. I attended three CNL webinars and one in-person meeting with Councillor Giardini. I've summarized the highlights of these meetings and are listed below. The AECL and CNL Community Update Webinar, the President of the CAO AECL was happy with the federal budget, $1.3 billion for nuclear advancement. The aim is to have three times as much electricity by 2030. On the Environmental Stewardship Council, we have noted the chain of command, ex-military, AECL owns nuclear power in Canada. They in turn contract operations to Canadian National Energy Alliance, which is called CNEA. CNEA consists of SNL Lavalin, Jacob Engineering, and Flower Services. Their contract expires 2025 in December. CNA in turn oversees CNL. With the possible change of the CNEA companies, only top management will change. The CNL staff in Chalk River will remain the same. There have been over 2,000 engagements with Indigenous nations. The waste management audit for 2022, 45,000 records have been verified. Heavy water broken down with titanium is being extracted and sold. Money goes back to the feds and then returned to CNL. Of note, this is not sold for weapons. A drone was used in Belgium to go inside the plume to get a better idea how they're going to get rid of this. In the NRX Kalandria presentation, way back in the 50s, a picture of the Kalander being pulled to its current site by a grader. This thing was protected by burlap. How things have changed. CNL is now aware that the county has a forester, Lacy Rose, that can be a valuable source for their forestry mediation. On June 2nd, the county is scheduled to visit the facility. Douglas Point reactor decommissioning. Their licensing has been approved for non-nuclear building materials. There will be 20 shipments of low-grade radioactive material to Chalk River over eight years and one intermediate-grade radioactive material. High-level radioactive material is looking for a long-term solution. And lastly, the CRL's future management capabilities. 90% of the radioactive waste is can-do fuel. Working with other countries on how to plan to store it. There is no plan at the present time. And in seven years, they will have a new facility in... And in seven years, they will have a new facility in Chalk River. New theme for CNL is storage to disposal. Thank you. Warden?
Thank you. Any questions for the member? Okay, seeing none. We'll move to the Eastern Ontario Regional Network, please.
Thank you, Warden. This is my report from EORN for April of this year. I did send along the report. My apologies for it being so late. As you can see, Rogers is being very aggressive with the targets for new sites as well as co-locations for this year. This past month has been busy, as the Warden indicated, on the seven and seven and how the EORN way of doing things can be rolled into different initiatives. EORN staff attended, as the Warden indicated, the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus meeting on March 9th and 10th, and the EOC put forward their slate of representatives for the EORN Board of Directors. We welcomed Warden Liz Danielson, Warden Nancy Peckford, Councillor Karma Williams, and Pierre Leroux and I were re-elected, and we brought in Brett Todd, Carl Bickerdyke, and Bob White has stayed on from Pembroke. Pierre Leroux, the Mayor of the Township of Russell and former Warden, was elected our new Chair, and I was elected as Vice Chair. And due to the onboarding of many new members, the majority of our April 6, 2023 meeting was spent in orientation. This was very unusual that we had so many new people, but it's very nice to not be the only woman on the board. And Rose is giving me the nod and the laugh because I've been the only woman on the board since I started, so it's been, you know, it's nice to have other women with me. And that's my report, Warden, if anybody has any questions.
Thank you. Comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none. Councillor Doncaster isn't able to be with us, so I'll very quickly review his report. He did note that he has submitted his nomination to serve on the board with the election to be held at the annual general meeting in Toronto the last weekend of May. And so with that, very quickly, he notes that he met in March 7th, 9th in Durham, and they were reviewing submissions to the federal budget, and some of their pre-budget priorities were defined in a publication entitled "A Better Life for All Canadians." And you'll note the bullet points, fires, storms, emergency management, housing and homelessness, and the Housing Accelerator Fund. And the third bullet point, near and dear to us, is that infrastructure funding with an invest of at least $1 million, a billion annually. And the Canadian Community Building Fund, increased more of that as well, up to $500 million. Community wellbeing, they talked about the, which doesn't apply to us, but the retroactive costs that are associated with the new RCMP bargaining agreement, as well as increased access to mental health and addiction services. Rural Forum, they talked about rural infrastructure and connectivity. They also talked about cellular service, which is important to us. Rural infrastructure, local water infrastructures, and the challenges, the financing, the necessary work. And I think by extension, that talked about the asset management plans we all have. Crime prevention and anti-racism, and then also conference planning took up some of their time. I would report that I've been invited to make a presentation at FCN on behalf of Rural Ontario Advocacy and some of the projects that we've been successful with as a Wardens Caucus, and then also I'll include some of the things that the county's been successful with as well. So, you know, increasingly, we're getting recognized as a valuable resource, and the rest of rural Canada is interested in what we have to say, so it's a real credit to the work that's been done by our staff here, as they've helped the Wardens Caucus develop the programs over the years, and then also the work that we've done here that carries our brand. So thank you for your efforts, everybody. And Rural Ontario Municipal Association, please.
Thank you, Warden. So my report for April, you all received the Roma blast with the highlights, so I've just included them again in case you didn't read that email, but I'm sure you all did. So we discussed rural access to services, broadband, as always, Railways and Drainage Act, and cybersecurity. I found the cybersecurity one very interesting. I would, if you don't have cyber insurance, I would urge you and your staff to look into the LAS partnership. From my own standpoint, each zone representative will be sending out introductory letters to our zone municipalities. What we've done is we're going to send them through our communications team, Red Brick, so that all messaging is consistent. We also discussed the Ever-Changing Planning Act, including Bill 97, which ostensibly will consolidate the provincial policy statement and places to grow. My concern with this change, it will inevitably cause serious changes to our official plans across Ontario, and knowing how long it took us to get to our official plan, you know, just last year or the year before, it's very disappointing that we may have to go back to the drawing board. Also, as I requested at Roma, the Portal for the Justices of the Peace is now open on the SoulGen website, but we are not listed as an area in need, and we don't know why. Due to the delays, as I mentioned earlier, in Hydro One in Bell Relocates, I asked if anybody else was having these challenges, which are causing delays in road rehabilitation. It seems that no other rep knows about problems in their particular zones, but they were going to go back to their areas and see if this is a theme. We also discussed Bill 5, the new codes of conduct for council members, but I will leave that in the Wardens' hand because it's an issue that AMO is dealing with at this time. And also received was the County of Renfrew Violence Against Women Resolution. It was a very interesting conversation with other zone reps and has already been adopted by some of our eastern region municipalities, so a good reminder to all of the Roma reps. And that is my report, Warden.
Thank you. Comments, questions, concerns? Councillor Kiluagui Richards, please.
For everyone's information, just going back to cybersecurity, if you want to look up what happened to Stratford, it was very costly. Basically, it cost them over $1 million. They were hacked. So just for a point of information.
And I believe the day before our meeting, Kitchener was hacked. Is that correct, Warden?
There were a couple municipalities, some that don't want to be identified because they haven't patched their systems yet at that time. So it is a rather extensive and pervasive problem for municipalities, especially rural municipalities. And this cyber initiative for smaller operations such as we have is likely a very valuable resource, and one of it is the rapid response initiative of it that might be helpful. So genuinely, I think if you have the time, you should take a look at it.
Yeah, it's called CMOM, C-I-M-O-M, cyber insurance, and the other three letters.
Yes. So, and this has been something I think LAS has worked on with AMO and Roma for about 18 months to get to this point, and there has been some, a lot of consultation with experts in the field because it evolves seemingly every five minutes that there's something different. So it's as mobile and agile as it can be, but it should be of help. And did I see the councillor from Armpire?
Thank you, Warden. Just cybersecurity for Armpire, our insurance company, whoever they are, I can't tell you, we have to take a cybersecurity course and pass it with 90% or more, or our cybersecurity isn't valid. So we just finished that up about a month ago, and we have to do that every year. So if you want to get more information on that, talk to Maureen Spratt, our Chief Clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. Good information. Councillor from Laurentian Hills, please.
Thank you, Warden. So the statement about the justices of the peace, is that something that we should be addressing, sending a letter or?
I have the impression we, did we discuss that at Finance and Admin with the expectation of a letter?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yes, we did.
We did. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. I knew I discussed it somewhere, a series of somewheres, but I was pretty sure it was in here at one point. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you very much. Moving on, if I could have any notice of motions, please? Any members' written motions? And new business. Councillor Bonchar Valley, please.
Thank you, Warden. Just a reminder, you are all invited to Rio Tap and Grill between 5:00 and 7:00. There will be snacks, but this is after the OVTA and OTO AGM and awards yesterday. Our township did a tourism strategy, and there'll be a five-minute presentation on that. That's what you got to sit through to get your snacks. Yeah, tonight. Oh, yeah, today, right, yeah, after County Council. Yep. And I'll remind everybody that the asset management seminar put on by AMO is happening at the Eagles Nest tomorrow morning for elected at 9:00 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Councillor Township, or sorry, the Town of Armpire?
Thank you, Warden. If I was going to stand up?
Certainly.
For those of us that were at Blizzard on the 2nd of February for the Ontario Winter Games, there was about 1,000 of these stumps. Anyways, it takes an hour and a half, no, an hour and 10 minutes to drive from here to there, from my house to there, and I had a vision. So I asked the Warden if I could take a couple of these stumps that night. It turned, a couple months later, I actually captured them. We have Bonnie Giles paint, all the Winter Games that took place, as well as the logo from the Pickwakanund, the Algonquins of Ontario, and on the top is our crest from the Town of Armpire, the County of Renfrew. So on behalf of council, the participants, all the volunteers, we'd like to make a presentation to the county if they'll accept it.
We would certainly accept that.
Second part of this thing is, you had the men's shed this morning. I'm not a member, but I did use their stuff. So we have same, another log, but we chopped it in pieces and we made sort of like a coaster with our Winter Games, and it's made out to the Chair, Peter Emo. We have the Treasurer, Jennifer Murphy, and we have the Games Manager, Cindy Burwell. Again, from council, participants, and all the volunteers, thank you very much for a very successful Winter Games.
Thank you very much.
These are going to need a really big drink to put on if they're coasters.
Dan? We'll get a, yeah, we'll get a picture. Dan, you want to stay with us?
Dan.
Stand.
Oh my God, no one's going to be the photographer. No. No. He's like a lot of all the posters.
I know.
Yeah, sure it is.
That's very thoughtful of you and certainly something that'll be, something we'll remember, and it'll be nice to look at every day. As I said before, it was a great experience, and thank you for the opportunity, and thank you for the recognition for our group. I know my name's on the front end of the letterhead, but my work was made very easy by the thousands of volunteers who spent many hours, and also the people who had the good sense to make the application in 2018 and to prove that we could, you know, that we had the facilities to do it. So it truly is a long term, and it was a team effort, and I'm grateful to have the opportunity to be a part of it. So thank you very much, and thank you very much, Dan, for organizing this and thinking your way through it and producing it. It's certainly appreciated.
And thanks for the men's shed.
Oh, yes. Men's shed. And thank you. As you know, we get constant updates on the state of the world right now, and it is Administrative Professionals Day, and so we'd like to offer our congratulations, our expressions of thankfulness. As you know, noticed today, no doubt, our administrative professionals did a great job organizing the agenda and putting information together, which I tore apart rather haphazardly and with great glee, and they tolerate that and come back with an excellent product every time. So thank you very much for everything that you do for us to allow us to function efficiently, effectively, and very well. It wouldn't have happened without you, so thank you. And so with that, I'd like to get a motion and a seconder, if you don't mind, for the confirmatory bylaw, 6723, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council of the County of Renfrew at the meeting held on April 26, 2023. Mover, North of Wanda Wilderforce, and seconder, Township Greater Madawaska. You've heard the motion, discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you. And a motion to adjourn, please. Mover, Laurentian Valley, and second Township Headclara Maraya. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you very much.